The visitors will retire behind the rail. And members take their seat. We'll get started. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes the Reverend Terrence D. Griffin, pastor of First African Baptist Church. He is here today as the guest of Councilman Alan Dom. I would ask all members, guests, and visitors to please rise.
Thank you Pastor.
Let us pray. Father, our God, the God of Finnegan, Tate, Artona, Schwartz, Coleman, Street, and Vernon, the God of Darrell Clark, we first pause to acknowledge you as our Maker and our King. We pay homage to you because you are God and God alone. You changed times and seasons, set up kings and queens, prime ministers and presidents, governors and mayors, and deposed them. You give wisdom to the wise and knowledge to the discerning. For this, we praise your name and bow in humble submission to your will. As we gather today, we pray for the congressmen and officers who were shot on yesterday. We ponder this unspeakable atrocity and the violence that sometimes plague our cities, state, and country. In God and our frustration, we know that we cannot live like this anymore. Breed your spirit of change throughout this land, for we are in perpetual pain. We desire a country where machetes are beaten into pruning hooks and our guns into scrap metal. And in this Pentecost season, we desire the outpouring of your spirit on all flesh. Thank you, God, for this great city of brotherly love and sisterly affection. Bless your servant, President Darrell Clark, and breathe your divine benediction on all our legislators. We are eternally grateful, God, for this great democracy that we live in, that has been a beacon to the rest of the world. Protect our nation from the selfish and the selfless. May we ever be a lighthouse to the weary travelers on the stormy seas of our global village. May we ever be the breadbasket for the hungry. May we continue to be that nation where freedom rings in every nook and cranny, in every village and town, in every bar and city, and in every state and region. Continue to crown our good with brotherhood from sea to shining sea. Protect us, Lord, from those who seek to destroy our democracy. Protect us from those who see this business of governing as child's play. And now, Father, as council deliberates today, give each council person the wisdom of Solomon, the patience of Job, the faith of Abraham, the honesty of Joseph, the fortitude of Jacob, the meekness of Moses. And when council is adjourned today, and each council person lays down to rest tonight, may they sleep with a clear conscience that they did what is right. Then, God, we look forward to the day when we will join you for that great council meeting in the heavens, where you will be the president of council, where there will be no nays but ayes. Oh, thank you, Lord, and we are mindful and careful to give you the praise, the honor, and the glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much Reverend for those inspiring words. Thank you very much. Have quiet, please. Thank you. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Taubmanberger.
Council President for this special order. It is really my honor to introduce the leadership of the Philadelphia Disabled Community. They are here marking Disabled Week. It is also marking the parade that will take place from the Constitution Center to City Hall on Saturday. I urge all my colleagues to participate, and I also thank my colleague Councilman Derek Green for his availability and his cosponsorship in all these endeavors. And I thank them, and I would urge my council members for a nice round of applause for the leadership of the disabled community.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
And welcome. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. This morning, I get a chance to introduce the intern that joined us during caucus. We should know that she is the vice chair of our Philadelphia Youth Commission, and she chairs the Youth Commission's Policy Committee. And more importantly, she is what I want to be when I grow up, and that is an author of books. She's the co-author of the forthcoming book, Math Renaissance: Growing Math Circles, Changing Classrooms, and Creating a Sustainable Math Education. She's a young activist and an author and a Benjamin Franklin scholar at the University of Pennsylvania. Let's celebrate this rising star, Rachel Stenig. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Lady, and good job in caucus this morning. Congratulations. The next order of business is approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, June 8, 2017, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, June 8, 2017, be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded. That the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, June 8, 2017 stand and approve, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. Next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests of leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to welcome everyone who has come down today to witness their government in action. We hope your stay here today is a knowledgeable one, but more importantly, a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. Again, thank you so much. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass, who will present a resolution recognizing Mastery Charter School North Women's Basketball Team. Would Ayana Maisiac and those accompanying her please join the Councilwoman at the podium? And joining Councilwoman Bass, we have Councilman O., Councilman Jones, Councilman Johnson, and Councilwoman Blackwell, and Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning. Well, let's give a round of applause to our championship-winning Mastery High School Lady Pumas Basketball Team, because everybody loves a winner. Isn't that right, Councilman Jones?
Yeah.
And so, we have a resolution that we'd like to read in honor of them and the stellar work and the performance that they've done, not just in their academic studies, but also in the field of basketball and sports. And we want to recognize our young people when they're doing something great, don't we?
Yes.
So, let's celebrate them today. The resolution reads, "Recognizing and honoring the Mastery Charter School North Women's Basketball Team for winning the 2017 Philadelphia Public League Championship Title." Whereas on February 25, 2017, Mastery Charter Schools Lady Pumas won the Philadelphia Public League Championship Title in a very close game by beating N-Hotep Charter 57 to 55. Whereas the win was particularly meaningful for Mastery Charter because they had lost to N-Hotep in the previous two years playoffs.
Whereas Forward Jamie Byers was named the game's most valuable player for her aggressive play for scoring 12 points, including a critical steal. Byers was ably assisted by her teammate Devia Terry, who contributed an impressive nine points, 18 rebounds, and four assists. And...
Whereas Mastery Charter North Coach Damian Abrams was overjoyed at the effort of the entire team that never once gave up. As a result, on March 3, Mastery Charter will go on to play Archbishop Wood for the All-City Title. Now therefore be it...
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby honor and recognize the future, the Mastery Charter School North Women's Basketball Team for winning the 2017 Philadelphia Public League Championship Title.
Further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Mastery Charter North Coach Damian Abrams as evidence of their high esteem and deep admiration of this legislative body, and we would like to say congratulations.
And the Chair recognizes Ms. Maisiac.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mia Reed, and I am a Ladies Puma alum from graduating class of 2016. I am currently enrolled at Rosemont College, and I would like to say a few words in front of you guys today. When I think about basketball, I think about a sisterhood stronger than steel, through hard work and dedication, a bond formed that connects us together, and it shows on and off the court. My sisters here have shown what our sisterhood can accomplish. I am extremely proud of them and our coaching staff this year. I have not always been the confident young woman that stands before you. I wasn't always truly accepted in high school, but my sisters loved me for me. I commend young girls who struggle through the stereotypes of being a female athlete because playing a sport does not make you one of the guys. You are playing like a girl, and that is better than playing like one of the guys. There are no limitations to what a determined woman can do. Through the encouragement of my many coaches, I have cycled, run track, and crossed country, and even won a few awards in triathlons. But all the sports that I have played helped me not only stay fit and healthy, but they helped me create relationships that will last a lifetime. Thank you.
Council will be at ease. Someone else? Hold on. I have one more speaker.
I'm sorry. My name is Coach Damian Abrams. On behalf of Mastery Charter School and the Ladies Pumas, I'd like to thank you for this recognition. Thank you.
Council will be at ease. Recognizing Wanda Paul, would Ms. Paul and those accompanying her please join the Councilwoman at the podium?
I'd like to invite up the Chairman of the Board of the Philadelphia Visitors and Convention Bureau and the brilliant leadership of Julie Coca-Graham to the podium, please. Chairman Benedictus, Patrick Paul, to the podium, please. So how many of us got a chance to enjoy the NFL Draft festivities? Councilman Jones and Councilman Kenyatta Johnson, do you look forward to the fall Army-Navy game? Those type of experiences don't happen because we dream it or wish it. There is a think tank of genius hospitality professionals that make that happen. A couple of facts about the hospitality and tourism industry. We need to know that hospitality and leisure is the fastest-growing sector of employment in Philadelphia. Councilman Green would know that very well. With jobs up 23% since 2010, just last year, we all know that we had a chance to enjoy the DNC, and ultimately, the DNC and all of the 19 conventions in our city pushed attendance to 1 million people. That happens because of this agency. This year, we're going to enjoy 23 conventions and trade shows that are slated for the Philadelphia Convention and Visitors Bureau. And it happens because of leadership and professionals and technicians who make things happen. This morning, it's a wonderful pleasure for me to celebrate one of those leaders in that think tank. Hubert Humphrey said that one of the greatest gifts of life is friendship, and I have received it from Wanda Paul. So this morning, we are recognizing and honoring Wanda D. Paul for her extraordinary dedication, tireless advocacy, and lifetime of service to the citizens of Philadelphia. Whereas Wanda D. Paul was born and raised in a city of brotherly love and sisterly effectiveness, and is a proud graduate of the Temple University Fox School of Business. And whereas Mrs. Paul began her career as an auditor with DeLute Haskins and Sales in 1979, and went on to serve under the administration of our city's first African-American mayor, W. Wilson Good, from 1983 to 1985, before transitioning to the Philadelphia Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Whereas Mrs. Paul has represented the City of Philadelphia with distinction for nearly 30 years as a leader with the Philadelphia Convention and Visitors Bureau, the official Tourism Promotion Agency for the City of Philadelphia across the globe. Mrs. Paul currently serves as Senior Vice President, where she is responsible for administration of the Philadelphia Convention and Visitors Bureau budget, oversight of the organization's financial operations, technological improvements, and personnel administration, among many other responsibilities.
Whereas Mrs. Paul uses her time and talents to improve the quality of life in the city she loves. She serves on a board to several organizations impacting Philadelphians, including Steppingstone Scholars, Broad Street Ministry, the National Adoption Center, and the Urban League of Philadelphia Advisory Board, and is also a member of the International Association of Hospitality Accountants, the Federal Bureau of Investigation Community Service Partnership, the National Coalition of Black Meeting Planners, and the Destination Management Association International.
Whereas Mrs. Paul has showed particular devotion in advancing the cause of the Urban League of Philadelphia, a historic civil rights organization celebrating its centennial year in 2017. Mrs. Paul is a lifetime member of the League, and the first and only woman chairperson of its Board of Directors. Mrs. Paul has received the organization's Whitney M. Young Community Service and Volunteer of the Year Awards, and will be a centennial honoree at the Urban League's 2017 Empowerment Dinner.
Whereas the extraordinary contributions of Mrs. Paul have led to the receipt of numerous awards and accolades, including the Philadelphia Business Journal's Women of Distinction Award, the International Visitors Council Citizens Diplomacy Award, the Urban Education GEMPER Award, the Temple University Hall of Fame Award, now therefore be it...
Resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia does hereby honor, recognize, celebrate, and say thank you to Wanda D. Paul for your extraordinary dedication, tireless advocacy, and lifetime of service to the citizens of Philadelphia. Further resolved that an engrossed copy of this citation be presented to you as evidence of the sincere sentiments of this legislative body. Wanda D. Paul is an exceptional human being. Let's salute her. Thank you. Thank you, Blondell. Thank you, council members. I have a heart of appreciation for three things, three major things today. One is for city council, for this honor. I really appreciate it. Thank you so very much. But more importantly, thank you for everything you do for this great city. It is, Philadelphia is the city it is because of the tireless efforts of servants like you. So thank you. The council people that I'm about to mention, Council President Darrell Clark, Councilwoman Marion Tasco, Councilman Brian O'Neill, and my personal friend, Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown, have all served on our boards during my tenure. Thank you for your leadership, for your service, and for your support over the years. I also have a heart of appreciation for the Philadelphia Convention and Visitors Bureau. I've served under three CEOs during my 31-and-a-half-year tenure. They are Tom Muldoon, Jack Ferguson, and the incomparable Nick de Benedictus, as chairman of the Board of the Philadelphia Convention and Visitors Bureau. I'm sorry. Julie Coca-Graham is the incomparable CEO that I'm currently serving under. Bill Giles, Bruce Crawley, and Nick de Benedictus are the chairman that I've served under. You can imagine, only three CEOs in 31 years, and three chairmen in 31 years. They stick around for a reason. They stick around because it is by far the best convention and visitors bureau in the country. And what helps make it the best are the staff members that are behind me, the team that makes up the Philadelphia Convention and Visitors Bureau. There are tireless workers who do their very best to make the Convention and Visitors Bureau the best in the country. And lastly, please indulge me by thanking, by saying that I've hit the husband lottery. I married Patrick Paul 20 years ago. He has been a rock and an inspiration to me over those 20 years. So allow me, indulge me, to thank my husband, Patrick Paul, who's been a great husband. Thank you all very much.
The council will be at ease. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take a moment and acknowledge, I have students here from Greenfield Elementary School. Can y'all all stand up? They're here observing us in City Council today. They are the future of our city, so just want to acknowledge them. Welcome to City Council, everyone. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Well, at this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones, who will present a resolution recognizing Brent Rudy Edwards. Would Brent Rudy Edwards and those accompanying him, please join the councilmen at the podium.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker, Councilman Green, Councilman Tolbenberger, Councilman Gim, and Council Lady Blondell Reynolds Brown.
So, as a proud alumnus of Overbrook High School, the school on the hill, we haven't seen a basketball championship, Councilwoman Bass, or Councilman Green, in a minute. We haven't seen a football championship in a while, from West, you know, they, they win the Turkey Bowl. But what we do real well at Overbrook is grow heroes, all right? And let me just check, see if I see an S on his chest or an O on his chest. It's Overbrook, not Superman. But I want to recognize somebody that all too often, if you watch the media, they depict our young people in a negative way. All too often, when you watch television, you only see the negative side of what young people represent. But what I'm showing you today is the best of what we can expect from our youth in this country, and definitely in this city. Because everybody, at some point in their life, is afraid. I don't care what you say, at some point in their life, you had to look yourself in the mirror and find out where courage lives. And at that time when you're afraid, what you do next determines the measure of the person. I want to introduce to some and reacquaint to others, and recognize the heroism of Brent Rudy Edwards that occurred on the morning of Saturday, May 27, 2017, when he rescued his one-year-old nephew from a fire in the Overbrook section of Philadelphia. Whereas, on Saturday, May 27, 2017, at approximately 10:30 a.m., a fire started inside a toaster oven at a row home on the 1000 block of Flanders Road in the Overbrook section of Philadelphia. Eight family members were inside the residence at the time. And?
Whereas, the family escaped, they realized their one-year-old relative Bryce was still inside as flames billowed out of the window. That is when Brent Rudy Edwards, a sophomore at Councilman Jones alma mater, Overbrook High School, ran into the house to rescue his one-year-old nephew. And whereas, the house was overcome with smoke as Edwards ran in, he couldn't see anything as he searched frantically for his nephew, then suddenly, he heard a sound, a baby's cough. Edwards reached out, grabbed a tiny arm, and scooped up his nephew, Bryce. Holding him close to his chest, Edwards staggered back outside, where he gave the baby to his mother and collapsed on the landing. And?
Whereas, overcome by smoke inhalation, Edwards was taken to Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. He was released the following day. As Edwards recovers, he is grateful that his baby nephew is alive and well. And whereas?
In the words of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy. The true neighbor will risk his position, his prestige, and even his life for the welfare of others." And?
Whereas, too often, Philadelphia's everyday heroes go unacknowledged when they step up and act on someone else's behalf. More often these days, we hear about the selfishness of young people. The action of Brent Rudy Edwards is an example of altruism, selflessness, compassion, and bravery.
Whereas, it is a pleasure and a great privilege to be able to acknowledge a city of Philadelphia resident who goes above and beyond the call of duty to ensure the well-being and safety of another individual. Now therefore?
Be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia, that it hereby recognize the heroism of Brent Rudy Edwards that occurred on Saturday, May 27, 2017, when he rescued his one-year-old nephew from a fire in the Overbrook section of Philadelphia. Further resolved, that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Brent Rudy Edwards as evidence of our sincere respect and appreciation of this legislative body. Will you join me in welcoming Rudy, Rudy, here today as our hero?
The Chair now recognizes Brent Rudy Edwards for some remarks, as well as the Principal Edwards, or Principal Jackson.
I am honored everybody took their time out of their day just to reward me today. But I saved my nephew out of love. Thank you.
On behalf of Brent's mother, who cannot be here today, and definitely Overbrook High School, we thank you for recognizing this young man, who is definitely an asset to our community every day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next order of business is Communications, and the Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages to the Chief Clerk from the Mayor. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Hall of Fame Charter, and today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 170461, 170472, 170473, 170474, 170475, 170499, 170509, 170510, 170518, 170556, 170565, and 170566. And I am pleased to advise you that on June 14, 2017, I signed the following bills, which were passed by Council at its session on June 8, 2017. Bill numbers 170198, 170199, 170200, and 170285. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the central Tioga Urban Renewal Area identified by house number and street address as 1621 through 1631 West Manango Street. And a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the west Philadelphia redevelopment area identified by house number and street address as 6161 West Gerard Avenue. And a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Haddington Urban Renewal Area, unit numbers two and three identified by house numbers and street addresses as 5901 through 5913 Market Street, 5915 through 5917 Master Street, 5919 Market Street, 5921 Market Street, 5923 through 31 Market Street. And a resolution approved the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Mantua Urban Renewal Area identified by house number and street address as 3715 Mount Vernon Street. And an ordinance authorizing the bond committee to sell bonds at public or private negotiated sale to provide funds toward various capital municipal purposes, providing for appropriations through the sinking fund commission for the payment of such bonds, authorizing agreements to provide credit or payment or liquidity sources for the bonds in connection with issuance of the bonds, and certain other actions, providing for the, obtaining the consent of the electors to increasing the indebtedness of the city, and fixing a day and providing for arrangements for holding the election for obtaining such consent, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Do you have any additional messages?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. I am pleased to offer three privileged resolutions, and after the readings of the title, I would like to speak very, very briefly on the resolution saluting Emlyn Tunnel. And I want to say thank you to Councilmembers Parker, Skriller, Bass, Toltenberger, Green, Dom, Blackwell, Jones, and O for cosponsoring any one or all three of the resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A resolution recognizing June 19, 2017, as World Ciclcele Awareness Day in the City of Philadelphia.
This week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring photographer, Michael Nichols, for his award-winning career and documentation of wildlife conservation.
This week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Emlyn Tunnel for his courageous military service during World War II, and his historic achievement as the first African-American inducted into the National Football League Hall of Fame.
And that will be on this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. To the football enthusiasts among us, and to those of us who care about achievements of African-Americans, I'll call to your attention on your desk, a postcard which speaks to Emlyn Tunnel, the first African-American member of the Pro Football Hall of Fame. NPR calls him, and I quote, "A casualty of the unfamiliarity football often has with his past." He continues to be honored for helping to break the color barrier in professional football. And decades later, in 2011, he was awarded the Coast Guard's Silver Life-saving Medal for his acts of heroism during the 1940s. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I introduce one bill on your behalf and seven non-privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing the bond committee to sell bonds at public or private negotiated sale to provide funds toward various capital municipal purposes, providing for appropriations through the sinking fund commission for the payment of such bonds, authorizing agreements to provide credit or payment or liquidity sources for the bonds in connection with issuance of the bonds.
Refer to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution adding Muhammad Ali Way to the street signs on 52nd Street between Parkside and Pascal Avenues.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution, adding Siddiq's Water Ice Way to the street signs on South 60th Street between Locust and Spruce Streets.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Mantua Urban Renewal Area identified by house number and street address as 3715 Mount Vernon Street.
That will be on next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements are on, situated in the 3rd Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements are on, situated in the 51st Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements are on, situated in the 51st Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements are on, situated in the 6th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Also on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer six resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution, I am recognizing June 12 through the 19th as 2017 Disarm, 2017 as Disarm Hate Week in the City of Philadelphia.
That will be on this week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements are on, situated in the 16th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements are on, situated in the 43rd Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
That will be on next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements are on, situated in the 37th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Cecil Bemore Avenue Urban Renewal Area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 1405 Jefferson Street and 1407 Jefferson Street.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged, non-privileged resolution authorizing the, approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model city's urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 1029 through 1031 Mount Vernon Street, 1026 Lemon Street, and 1028 Lemon Street.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. I offer no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, I have two privileged, four non-privileged resolutions, one cosponsored by Toltenberger, Green, Greenly, Gim, Parker, Johnson, Bass, and Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing the accomplishments and the collaborative efforts of Philadelphia's Criminal Justice Partners for successfully reducing the local jail population by almost 20% since July of 2015 with the implementation of programs under the MacArthur Foundation's Safety and Justice Challenge.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Just briefly, Mr. President, and thank you for the indulgence, Julie Wertheimer, who comes in these chambers all the time, is here and from the Managing Director's Office, who is the tip of the spear for the reduction in the prison population. Can you stand up? Stop hiding behind that pole. Get your... Round the applause. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman, and that will be on this week's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring and commemorating Juneteenth in Philadelphia as the day when slaves were freed in the United States of America more than 150 years ago, and further celebrating National Juneteenth Independence Day, which is also known as Freedom Day on Monday, June 19, 2017.
This week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Hattieington Urban Manul area, unit numbers two and three identified by house numbers and street addresses as 5901 through 13 Market Street, 5915 through 5917 Market Street, 5919 Market Street, 5921 Market Street, and 5923 through 5931 Market Street.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the west Philadelphia redevelopment area identified by house number and street address as 6161 West Gerard Avenue.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the 4th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the 38th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Also on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have one non-privileged resolution.
Mr. Decker, please read the resolution.
A non-privileged resolution also naming South 31st Street between Grace Ferry Avenue and Wharton Street, Lillian Ray Way.
That will be on next week's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Keone Santos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two non-privileged resolutions.
Mr. Decker, please read it.
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the 18th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the 19th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Also next week's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two resolutions, one privileged resolution and one non-privileged resolution. I request a motion to suspend the rules on the non-privileged resolution so that it could be on today's final passage calendar.
Okay, thank you, sir.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold hearings regarding the provision of behavioral health services for people of color and the state of mental health and mental health awareness in the black community and other communities of color.
That will be on this week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution calling upon the School Reform Commission to reject Resolution 7, Alternative Special Education Program for Students with Disabilities in Grades K through 12, that seeks to establish a new segregated school for certain students with disabilities and to insist that the school district provide equality, inclusive education to every child.
And Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the rules of council be suspended so this non-privileged resolution could be on today's final passage calendar.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Resolution will be on this week's final passage calendar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one privileged resolution cosponsored by councilmembers Johnson and Blackwell, Heenan, Brown, Gim, and Bass.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Decker, please read the title of the resolution.
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Shirley on the occasion of her retirement from Labor's Local Number 332.
Chair, that will be on this week's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have one non-privileged resolution and just want to make brief remarks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the title.
A non-privileged resolution to commemorate and honor the life and legacy of Balter Baal Pingwell, a former political prisoner who braved imprisonment and death threats to challenge authoritarian regimes in the Philippines and around the globe and became a tireless activist for peace and justice and a radical voice for democratic people's movement.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. This week, a great light for peace and justice went out in the world and in our city. Balthazar Baal Pingwell was a great freedom fighter in his home country of the Philippines. He was, he not only was one of the leaders of the largest youth and student organization in the Philippines that at one point gathered 75,000 members in 1971, he was also a founding officer of Bayan, which was a people's movement that eventually toppled the Ferdinand Marcos regime that had imposed martial law in the Philippines. Baal went to prison for his beliefs. He was tortured in prison and came out and kept organizing. He kept organizing to demand that authoritarian regimes could not have a place or a voice in a rising democracy, and that the best counter to authoritarianism and oppression within a democracy were the voices of ordinary people, including our youth. Baal did not stop his work and in his belief in revolutionary ideas and ideals. We were fortunate that he came to the United States, raised his three sons here, devoted his life to peace and justice work through the American Friends Service Committee, and continued to speak out about his experiences. He demanded a better, he demanded demilitarization, he called for anti-war, he wanted to see immigrant groups and immigrant movements rise to the forefront, and he always used his incredible intellect, passion, humor, and warmth to train and nurture many activists in the tools and habits of resistance. He was a hero to everybody who knew him, he was a champion of Asian America, and he was a champion to countless other activists around the globe who believe that there is a voice for peace and justice today. And I think that at this time, as we ask questions about ourselves every day in a democracy where we have the privilege to speak out, we have a true commitment to continue Baal's legacy, and I hope that this resolution will be considered by my members for their cosponsorship. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I understand from Mr. Decker that is a privileged resolution, so that will be on today's, that will be on today's final passage calendar. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Tolbenberger.
Chairman Greenly, good morning. I have no bills or resolutions this morning.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer one resolution. It is privileged. It's cosponsored by Mr. Green and all councilmembers, I think all councilmembers, and I have to be held for that.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, please read the title.
Non-privileged, sorry.
Non-privileged, right.
I'm new.
A non-privileged resolution calling on the City of Philadelphia to stand with Nabisco workers and protect American jobs by supporting a no buy policy of Nabisco Montelez products manufactured outside the U.S.
That will be on next week's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer one privileged resolution on behalf of President Clark and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the titles.
A privileged resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Streets and Services to hold public hearings examining the implementation of Vision Zero in the City of Philadelphia.
This week's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the 34th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer two privileged resolutions and one bill.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Decker, please read the titles.
An ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Germantown Avenue, Westside, West Phila... Atlanta Street, West Two, Westview Avenue.
That be referred to appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the central Tioga Urban Manul area identified by house number and street address as 1621 through 1631 West Vanango Street.
Next week's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the 11th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's final passage calendar. And the chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Offer two non-privileged resolutions cosponsored by councilmembers Cindy Bass, Mark Squilla, and one bill, and may be heard after the title of the bill is read.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, please read the title of the bill and then the resolutions.
An ordinance permitting Title 17 of the Philadelphia Code on Title Contracts and Procurement by adding subsection 17510, subparagraph B, providing for the oversight by the City Council Appropriations Committee of Compliance with All Economic Opportunity Plans for the participation of minority and female workers, minority-owned disadvantaged business enterprises, female-owned disadvantaged business enterprises, and disabled-owned disadvantaged business enterprises.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I would like to offer this subsection to amend 17-510, which is entitled Enforcement. Unfortunately, enforcement in the history of our city, when it comes to diversity and inclusion, has been woeful, and I think one of the reasons is because it is very hard to enforce something within the administration itself. And so subsection B provides oversight by City Council through the Appropriations Committee that will monitor compliance with all economic opportunity plans to ensure participation of minority and female workers are as required according to the disparity study, and if not, the committee may recommend to City Council the suspension of payments to contractors where it is not satisfied with the contractor's performance under the EOP or the Economic Opportunity Plan until such time as the committee is satisfied that the contractor will comply with the EOP and recommends the City Council that it reinstates such payments. And this action will be done by resolution. I offer this as a possible solution to the lack of teeth in enforcement. I'm certainly open to further discussions with my colleagues and interested in any other opportunities to ensure that we are enforcing the goals that we set before this body for our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Mr. Decker.
And a non-privileged resolution urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to adopt House Bill 1446, the Pennsylvania Clean Transportation Infrastructure Networks Act to promote well-planned clean transportation infrastructure.
Next week's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution urging the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission to maintain Philadelphia refinery's pipeline access to western Pennsylvania markets by denying Laurel Pipeline Company application, thereby supporting jobs and economic growth in Philadelphia and southeastern Pennsylvania.
Next week's final passage calendar. The next order of business is reports from committees. The chair recognizes Councilman Squilla for a report from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Rules reports 28 bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, please read the report. This will take a while.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Rules to which is referred Bill Number 160839, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 30th Street, Chestnut Street, 31st Street Extended, Market Street, 32nd Street, and Arch Street Extended. And Bill Number 161104, entitled an ordinance permitting Section 14516 of the Philadelphia Code entitled West Overlay District. And Bill Number 170162, entitled an ordinance permitting Section 14513 of the Philadelphia Code entitled TOD, Transit-Oriented Development Overlay District, and Section 14702, entitled Floor Area and Height Bonuses, all to revise requirements relating to the Transit-Oriented Development Overlay District. And Bill Number 170192, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Spruce Street, South 40th Street, Locust Street, and South 41st Street, further to adopt the master plan for the University of Pennsylvania. And Bill Number 170266, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Filbert Street, 59th Street, Market Street, and Southwood Street. And Bill Number 170398, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 40th Street, Gerard Avenue, 34th Street, Mantua Avenue, 31st Street, Spring Garden Street, and Lancaster Avenue. And Bill Number 170399, entitled an ordinance permitting Section 14504 of the Philadelphia Code entitled NCO, Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District, by adding new areas entitled Palatin Village Zone 1 and Palatin Village Zone 2. And Bill Number 170402, entitled an ordinance to amend Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising certain provisions of Section 14600 entitled Use Regulations. And Bill Number 170403, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Clearfield Street, Sheddwick Street, Lipicott Street, and 34th Street. And Bill Number 170404, entitled an ordinance permitting Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to prohibit medical marijuana dispensary locations within 500 feet of any daycare. And Bill Number 170406, entitled an ordinance continuing the Mount Airy Business Improvement District beyond its termination date in an area that generally includes both sides of Germantown Avenue from 6300 to 7631, and certain blocks of streets that intersect that portion of Germantown Avenue, and for which Mount Airy Improvement District Incorporated, a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, is the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the District. And Bill Number 170428, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Diamond Street, 10th Street, Burke Street, 11th Street, Norris Street, and Marvine Street. And Bill Number 170430, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Cambria Street, Kensington Avenue, Allegheny Avenue, Jasper Street, Clearfield Street, Helen Street, Elkhorn Street, Emerald Streets, Stoller Street, and Frankfurt Avenue. And Bill Number 170436, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Knights Road, Red Lion Road, East Caswick Road, Morell Avenue, and Byberry Creek. And Bill Number 170463, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by London Avenue Extended, Academy Road, Grant Avenue, Frankfurt Avenue, the Pocessin Creek, and the Delaware River. And Bill Number 170465, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Gate Street, Henry Avenue, Roxborough Avenue, Magdalena Street, Walnut Lane, Henry Avenue, Kingsley Street, Houghton Street, Walnut Lane, Sharps Lane, Tower Street, Levering Street, Silverwood Street, Leverington Avenue, Silverwood Street, Fountain Street, and Ridge Avenue. And Bill Number 170468, entitled an ordinance establishing a business improvement district encompassing certain existing and future hotel properties within the boundaries of the City of Philadelphia, to be known as the Philadelphia Hospitality Improvement Levy District, designated in the Philadelphia Hospitality Improvement Levit District Corporation to serve as the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the District, approving a prayer for the District including a list of proposed programs and services related to the development and promotion of the hotel and tourism industry in the city. And Bill Number 170469, entitled an ordinance to amend Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising certain provisions of Section 14500, entitled Overlay Zoning Districts for the amendment of the North Delaware Avenue Neighborhood Commercial Area Overlay District. Commercial Area Overlay District. And Bill Number 170476, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Front Street, the Delaware Expressway, Laurel Street, Canal Street, and Poplar Street. And Bill Number 170495, entitled an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to revise certain provisions of Chapter 14600 entitled Use Regulations by amending the green roof calculations. And Bill Number 170496, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Girard Avenue, 41st Street, Parkside Avenue, Girard Avenue, and Railroad Right-of-Way. And Bill Number 170498, entitled an ordinance amending Section 14202 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Rules of Measurements by providing for further measurement exclusions, amending Section 14502 entitled CTR Center City Overlay District by modifying the subsection entitled Britton House Square and adding new bulk and massing controls for the area. And Bill Number 170500, entitled an ordinance to amend the master plan for Temple University and to approve the proposed addition to 1810 Leacour's Walk. And Bill Number 170501, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Cotman Avenue, Christmas Street, Frankfurt Avenue, Cheltenham Avenue, Bustleton Avenue, and Roosevelt Boulevard. And Bill Number 170503, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Bridge Street, Harbison Avenue, Tulip Street, Hegerman Street, Devereaux Avenue, Torres Del Avenue, Robin Street, Van Dyke Street, Unruh Avenue, Keystone Street, Devereaux Avenue Extended, and the Delaware Expressway. And Bill Number 170504, entitled an ordinance to amend Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising certain provisions of Sections 14200 entitled Definitions, and 14900 entitled Signs. And Bill Number 170512, entitled an ordinance to amend the Sports Stadium Specialist Purpose District, master plan in the area bounded by Darian Street, Packer Avenue, 7th Street, and Patterson Avenue by approving the proposed Ballpark Services Building at the intersection of Hartraff and Darian Streets. And Bill Number 170516, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 3rd Street, Burke Street, 6th Street, and Lehigh Avenue. Respectfully reports it is considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the first reading this day of the 28 bills that were just read into the record by the clerk.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of the 28 bills that were just read into the record by Mr. Decker. All those in favor will please say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The chair now recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez for... No. Okay? We'll go to the next one. The chair now recognizes Councilman Heenan for a report from the Committee on Public Property and Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee Public Work and Public Property reports 12 bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman. Ms. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Public Property and Public Works, to which is referred Bill Number 170287, entitled an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development all a part of a parcel of land located in the area bounded by Linden Avenue, State Road, Amtrak's Northeast Corridor, and I-95 for further conveyance. And Bill Number 170358, entitled an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to enter into a lease agreement with Beach Interplex for use by the city of all or a portion of the premises located in 1514 Cecil Moore Avenue. And Bill Number 170397, entitled an ordinance authorizing the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development to purchase two properties located at 1620 South 49th Street and 4900 Graves Ferry Avenue. And Bill Number 170437, entitled an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development all a part of a parcel of land located in the area bounded by East Ontario Street, Weagle Street, Tulip Street, and East Tioga Street for further conveyance. And Bill Number 170506, entitled an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property on behalf of the city to enter into a lease agreement with Washington Service Corporation for use by the city of all or a portion of the premises located at 8747 Frankfurt Avenue. And Bill Number 170507, entitled an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at 1425 Arch Street. And Bill Number 170511, entitled an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to convey to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority all a part of a parcel of land located in the area bounded by Market Street, North Southford Street, Filbert Street, and North 59th Street for further conveyance. And Bill Number 170513, entitled an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property on behalf of the city to enter into a lease agreement with Graves Ferry Partners by its agent, Corman Commercial Properties, for use by the city of all or a portion of the premises located at 3009 Graves Ferry Avenue. And Bill Number 170558, entitled an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property on behalf of the city to acquire fee simple title or a lesser interest by purchase condemnation or otherwise in parcels of land generally in the area bounded by Sesquahanna, Lambert, Norris, 22nd, Diamond, and 21st Streets, and authorizing an agreement between the city and the Philadelphia redevelopment authority for the PRA to act as the city's condemnation agent. And Bill Number 170559, entitled an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property on behalf of the city to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development for use by the city of premises located at 400 North Broad Street and 1501 Cala- Callahill Street. And Bill Number 170593, entitled an ordinance authorizing the procurement commissioner to enter into an agreement with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority to provide for the acquisition of big belly waste and recycling receptacles, related maintenance and software licensing, and authorizing an advertising concession, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports, it is considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the first reading of this day the 12 bills that were just read into the record by the clerk.
Is there a second? It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of 12 bills that were just read in the record by Mr. Decker. All those in favor will say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The chair now recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez for a report from the Committee on Appropriations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Appropriations reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Ms. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Appropriations, to which is referred Bill Number 170558, entitled an ordinance amending Bill Number 170195, approved in June of 2017, entitled an ordinance to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years 2018 through 2023 inclusive by adding, revising, and/or removing certain projects, amounts, and sources. Respectfully reports it is considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill 170558.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 170558. All those in favor will say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The chair now recognizes Councilwoman Squilla for a report from the Committee on Streets and Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I offer Committee on Streets and Services reports two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman.
We'll take it easy on Decker for this one.
Well... Ms. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Streets and Services, to which is referred Bill Number 170594, entitled an ordinance regulating the direction of movement of traffic on Lawrence Street between Ontario Street and West Morland Street. And Bill Number 170595, entitled an ordinance regulating the direction of movement of traffic on West Morland Street between Lawrence Street to 5th Street. Respectfully reports it is considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the first reading this day of Bills Number 170594 and 170595.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 170594 and 170595. All those in favor will say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Bass for a report from the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Ms. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs, to which is referred Bill Number 170464, entitled an ordinance authorizing the Parks and Recreation Commissioner and the Procurement Commissioner on behalf of the city to execute a concession agreement with Treetop Quest Inc. or its wholly-owned subsidiary for an aerial adventure park in West Fairmount Park, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it is considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 170464.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 170464. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Chair now again recognizes Councilwoman Bass for a report from the Committee on Public Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Public Health and Human Services reports two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Ms. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Public Health and Human Services, to which was referred Bill Number 161111, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 9 and 900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Professions to add a new section 9, 903, entitled Conversion Therapy, adding definitions and prohibiting the practice of conversion therapy by mental health providers on patients under 18 years of age. And Bill Number 170470, entitled an ordinance amending Title III of the Philadelphia Code entitled Air Management Code by amending Chapter 3, 200 thereof, entitled prohibited conduct to add a new section prohibiting the cutting of rubber tires by any person under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it is considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the first reading this day of Bills Number 161111 and 170470.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 161111 and 170470. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The next order of business is a consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with suspension rules of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on the second reading and final passage calendar for the next session of council. Mr. Decker, will you please read any other bills on the first reading calendar?
Bill Number 170553, entitled an ordinance authorizing Brandywire and Wilti Trust to construct, own, and maintain various right-of-way encroachments at 3001 through 3023 Market Street, all under certain terms and conditions.
The chair agrees. This bill will be placed on the second reading and final passage calendar for our next session of council. The chair now recognizes Councilman Heenan for a motion concerning the bills on the second reading and final passage calendars.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the consent agenda of the following bills and a second reading of the final passage calendars today. Bill Numbers 170196A, 170242, 170289, 170195, 170197, 170432, 170433, 170434, 170438, 170515, 170519, 170555, 170204, 170410, 170564, 170012, 170359, 170360, 170361, 170362, 170400, 170435, 170461, 170462, 170466, 170472, 170473, 170475, 170497, 170499, 170509, 170510, 170518, 170554, 170556, 170561, 170562, 170565, 170566, 170366, and 170514.
Is there a second? Just for the record, one of the bills being called up is Bill Number 170401. I think it was read as 410. 170401 is part of the... It has been moved and seconded that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the bills just read by Councilman Heenan. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will consider the consent agenda shortly. The chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In addition to the bills being considered on the consent agenda, the following resolutions of bills are being called up for the second reading final passage calendars today. Bill Numbers 170599, 170602, 170603, 170604, 170609, 170611, 170306, and 170474. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. Before considering these resolutions and bills, we will consider public comment with the rules as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendar for possible action at today's council session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you're not already signed up, please do so by giving your name to the sergeant arms at the table to my left. You will be called in the order in which your name appears on the sign-up sheet. You will have three minutes to speak. Please, in order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, please limit your comments to three minutes. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium. When there are 30 seconds remaining to your time, the light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to conclude your remarks. Once three minutes have passed, we appreciate you passing on the mic to the next speaker. I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules to limit repetitious matters on the same bills. I would ask Mr. Decker, please read the name of our first speaker.
Phil Demiani. Commenting on...
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank City Council for the resolution honoring Emlyn Tenell and Councilwoman Brown for doing this. It's a great honor. August 5th will be the 50th anniversary of Emlyn Tenell's being the first African-American in the country inducted in the Pro Football Hall of Fame. He's from right down the street in the suburb of Radnor, Garrett Hills section, class of 42, Radnor High School. Not only was he a great football player, 14 years in the NFL, missed one game, he was also a great military hero, served in World War II, and saved two people's lives. There's a movement afoot to honor him with the Seven-Foot Bronze Statue and to bring other honors and attention. We'd like to get him to the Mount Rushmore of athletes and American heroes. Thank you so much for your resolution today.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Decker?
Joe Danell. Commenting on 170602, 170555, 170603, and 170604.
Okay. Good afternoon. This is the official decree of the people and remand damas quo warranto, and as such requires immediate action and remedy. Every week, this council and mayor transfers private property to the government, possibly illegally. Trust and loyalty are required by the people of their government, so the people require the oath of office. I do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution, laws of the United States, and the Commonwealth... and laws of the United States and the Commonwealth and law... of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth, and that I will discharge my duties of my office with fidelity. Any person refusing to take this oath shall forfeit their oath of... their office. Ben Franklin and Patrick Henry noted, "The Bill of Rights and Constitutions were designed to protect the people by restraining the government. If a man's home is his castle, how can the government take this castle without trial by jury, payment, or due process? If the government's colluded to allow and perpetrate this apparent violation of Constitution and laws, why has no one been prosecuted? Oath-bound officials are oath-bound officials above the law. Recent prosecutions in New Jersey and Flint, Michigan, say no. When did 'by the people and for the people' become 'screw the people'? The Constitutions require immediate remedy of this breach of law. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison." Forty-two USC, nineteen eighty-two, nineteen eighty-three, nineteen eighty-five, nineteen eighty-six, nineteen eighty-seven, eighteen USC, two forty-one, two forty-two, twenty-three eighty-one, twenty-three eighty-four, PA Constitution, Article One, Section One through eleven, twenty-six PACSA, seven oh three, seven oh five, seven oh eight, seven oh nine, seven twelve, seven thirteen, seven sixteen, and other laws listed in SCOTUS fifteen eighty-nine sixty-five, fourteen one three three oh, fourteen four oh five six, appear violated. I call for the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, ten thirty-eight West Wyoming, the denial God given, forty-two USC, nineteen eighty-two property rights for twenty-three years. This is egregious, extraordinary, oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color of law government must have its charter to govern revoked until a constitutionally complying government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act any more than a fireman can refuse to fight a fire. The sovereign people require Constitution and laws be enforced. Jail is required for all who violate oath or law. It takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow monumental corruption.
Mr. Decker, our next speaker.
Terry Starks.
Good afternoon. I represent, express yourself, Urban Crisis Response Center.
Just say your name for the record.
Terry Starks. I'm just here today to let all the councilmen know that we have a strong ground pursuit with this violence that's going on in the city of Philadelphia, and we just plan to work dilligee with all of the councilmen and let them know that we're here to service each of their legislative districts, and we just want the full support from the councilmen. And that's all.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Decker?
Clark King. Commenting on 170599.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, council members, for your time. Yes, I am commenting on Resolution 170599. Climate change is employed to distract from the national priorities of the political system. Poverty caused by Wall Street is the national security crisis ignored. Communal diseases, chronic drug use, homelessness, crisis unemployment are indicative of the national failure. The Congress never voted on the Paris Accord. The then-president acted unilaterally as if the prince of state. The U.S. political system, that is, Congress, is not going to comply with climate change dictates and economic and population contraction policy with monetary financial controls, taxes, and such. It is antithetical to every child is precious. It is antithetical to every worker is essential. Today, Franklin Delano Roosevelt can instruct us. The redevelopment of North America cannot be avoided any longer. Good highway jobs are crucial to family and community formation. Great and grand national infrastructure projects will make America prosperous. Some Americans will get rich. Improving and reducing the cost of living, manufacture, industry, and business. The local Federal Reserve Bank must be transitioned into a public bank, funding government operations, infrastructure, and industry. We cannot forget how much money Philadelphia lost in swaps, over a billion dollars. Meanwhile, trillions of dollars are distributed through bailouts and quantitative easing, one, two, three, four. Where did this money go and who benefited? It must be investigated by Congress and assessed. The Wall Street system is a control of the government, instructing Congress on the budget process, scolding Congress for deficit spending that may impede on the bankers' profits. And they are also creating the U.S. medical system to be profitable to Wall Street, expanding control of the U.S. money system. Climate change taxes, tax deferrals, tax swaps, et cetera. There's nothing about the child or worker in all of this climate change business.
Thank you, sir.
Very good.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Decker. We will now consider today's bill consent agenda. I will ask Mr. Decker to read the titles of all the bills on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the bill on the consent agenda. Upon such an objection, and without debate, the bill will be immediately removed from the consent agenda and placed on our final regular passage calendar. Mr. Decker, will you now please read the titles of the bills on the consent agenda?
Bill Number 170596, entitled an ordinance to adopt the fiscal two thousand and eighteen capital budget. And Bill Number 170242, entitled an ordinance granting permission to Stephen Yo, owner and operator of royalty food truck located in the right-of-way on the north side of Norris Street between Thirteenth Street and Broad Street, to install, use, and maintain certain electrical wires, conduits, and appliances in, under, and across... in, under, and over the right-of-way on the north side of Norris Street between Thirteenth Street and Broad Street for the purposes of supplying electricity to said lunch truck. And Bill Number 170289, entitled an ordinance amending section twelve, seven oh one of the Philadelphia Code entitled Bicycle Lanes, by authorizing the Department of Streets to designate bicycle lanes in both directions on American Street from Jefferson Street to Lehigh Avenue, and for the removal of a travel lane on American Street in the same limits. And Bill Number 170195, entitled an ordinance to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and twenty-three inclusive. And Bill Number 170197, entitled an ordinance adopting the operating budget for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. And Bill Number 170432, entitled an ordinance constituting the fourteen supplemental ordinance to the General Gas Works Revenue Bond Ordinance of nineteen eighty-eight, authorizing the city of Philadelphia to sell either at public or private sale one or more series of gas works revenue bonds, and gas works revenue bonds to refund such bonds. And Bill Number 170433, entitled an ordinance approving the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen capital budget, providing for expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gas Works, including the supplying of funds in connection therewith. And Bill Number 170434, entitled an ordinance authorizing generally the continued issuance and sale by the city of Philadelphia of gas works revenue notes of the city, prescribing the form of notes and providing for their execution and payment, pledging certain revenues of the gas works as security, adopting a rate covenant, and directing the imposition and collection of rates and charges sufficient to comply therewith. And Bill Number 170438, entitled an ordinance approving a lease agreement between the Philadelphia Gas Works by Philadelphia Facilities Management Corporation, solely in its capacity as operator and manager of the city-owned Philadelphia Gas Works, and Germantown Realty Investment Group, for certain premises located at two twelve through two fourteen West Shelton Avenue. And Bill Number 170515, entitled an ordinance amending chapter nineteen thirty-two hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Keystone Opportunity Zone, Economic Development District, and Strategic Development Area, to provide for extension of certain benefits. And Bill Number 170519, entitled an ordinance amending chapter nineteen thirteen hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Real Estate Taxes by creating a tax foreclosure diversion program that requires housing and counseling assistance, updating tax installment payment agreements to help taxpayers with financial hardships, and other related items. And Bill Number 170555, entitled an ordinance authorizing the Director of Planning and Development on behalf of the city to file applications with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for a community development block grant, to file applications to participate in the Home Investment Partnership Program and the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and to apply for housing opportunities for persons with AIDS grant. And Bill Number 170204, entitled an ordinance amending chapter ten two hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Ethnic Intimidation and Institutional Vandalism, to clarify and revise its scope and related penalties. And Bill Number 170401, entitled an ordinance amending section seventeen twenty-one oh two of the Philadelphia Code entitled Counsel Review of Contracts with Certain Entities, to restore the exemption from counsel review provided in the Home Rule Charter for certain contracts between the city and the Support Center for Child Advocates. And Bill Number 170564, entitled an ordinance amending section two three oh five of the Philadelphia Code entitled Office of Property Assessment, Chief Assessment Officers, Powers and Duties, by further providing with respect to the manner in which assessments are determined for certain properties that are subject to rent restrictions, affordability requirements, and other related restrictions. And Bill Number 170012, entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Carpenter Street, Broad Street, and Washington Avenue. And Bill Number 170359, entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on the twenty-eight hundred and twenty-nine hundred blocks of East Allegheny Avenue, both sides. And Bill Number 170360, entitled an ordinance terminating a no-parking regulation on Burnside Street between Tower Street and a point one hundred forty feet west thereof, north side. And Bill Number 170361, entitled an ordinance establishing a no-parking regulation on Fox Street between Roberts Avenue and Abertford Avenue, east side. And Bill Number 170362, entitled an ordinance establishing a no-parking regulation on the Flat Rock Road between Leverington Avenue and Fountain Street, east side. And Bill Number 170400, entitled an ordinance amending section twelve, seven oh one of the Philadelphia Code entitled Designation of Bicycle Lanes, by authorizing the Department of Streets to designate a buffered bicycle lane in the eastbound direction on Chestnut Streets from South Forty-Fifth Street to South Thirty-Fourth Street, and to remove a travel lane on Chestnut Street in the same limits. And Bill Number 170435, entitled an ordinance legalizing an existing deck and fence encroachment at fifty-two hundred C Street. And Bill Number 170461, entitled an ordinance authorizing Route Thirty-four Group to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk café at fifty-twenty-one through fifty-twenty-three Baltimore Avenue. And Bill Number 170462, entitled an ordinance authorizing Boyle's Realty Partnership to install, own, and maintain concrete plant or encroachments at eighteen eighteen Chestnut Street. And Bill Number 170466, entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of the forty-four hundred through forty-five hundred block of Castor Avenue from Wyoming Avenue to East Cayuga Street. And Bill Number 170472, entitled an ordinance authorizing Twenty-seven Thirty-two Donna's Bar, Inc., to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk café at Twenty-seven Thirty-two East Allegheny Avenue. And Bill Number 170473, entitled an ordinance authorizing B One Holdings to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk café at seven sixty-seven South Ninth Street. And Bill Number 170475, entitled an ordinance authorizing W T Restaurant Holdings to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk café at seven forty-three South Fourth Street. And Bill Number 170497, entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on Cobbs Creek Parkway between Hazel and Caesar Avenues, both sides. And Bill Number 170499, entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines of grades on a portion of City Plan Number three oh seven, by striking from the city plan and vacating the southerly eighteen feet wide portion of Vine Street from Eighteenth Street to a point approximately one hundred and fifty feet eastwardly therefrom. And Bill Number 170509, entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines of grades on a portion of City Plan Numbers two forty and two ninety-six, by placing on the city plan Nixon Street from the existing northwestally terminus of Nixon Street northwest of Shawman Avenue to Port Royal Avenue, not on city plan, placing on the city plan River Road from Port Royal Avenue, not on city plan, to a point approximately ten feet southeast of the Philadelphia Montgomery County line. And Bill Number 170510, entitled and ordinance authorizing the revision of lines of grades on a portion of City Plan Number three eleven, by striking from the city plan and vacating the legally open portions of Westview Street from Springbank Street to Hoarder Street. And Bill Number 170518, entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines of grades on a portion of City Plan Number fifty-eight, by striking from the city plan and vacating Pearl Street from Thirteenth Street to Broad Street. And Bill Number 170554, entitled an ordinance authorizing Mr. Baldesschunta, owner and operator of the newsstand located on the west side of Thirty-Fourth Street, one hundred and forty-eight feet north of Convention Avenue, to construct, use, and maintain conduits in, under, and across the west side of Thirty-Fourth Street, one hundred and forty-eight feet north of Convention Avenue. And Bill Number 170556, entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines of grades on a portion of City Plan Number three oh eight, by striking from the city plan and vacating certain subservice portions and certain aerial portions of Moravian Street from Nineteenth Street to Twentieth Street. And Bill Number 170561, entitled an ordinance amending section twelve, seven oh one of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Designation of Bicycle Lanes, by authorizing the Department of Streets to designate a bicycle lane in the southbound direction on Fifteenth Street between Carpenter Street and Washington Avenue, and also regulating the direction and movement of traffic on Fifteenth Street between Carpenter Street and Washington Avenue, and establishing no parking regulations on both sides of Fifteenth Street from Carpenter Street to Washington Avenue. And Bill Number 170562, entitled an ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Granish Street, south side Frankfurt Avenue to Darrow Street. And Bill Number 170565, entitled an ordinance authorizing Gall &amp; Co. Malt House to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk café at thirty-one thirty-three Gall Street. And Bill Number 170566, entitled an ordinance amending section nine of an ordinance, Bill Number 150377, approved June eighteen, two thousand and fifteen, as amended by Bill Number 160566, approved June sixteen, two thousand and sixteen, entitled an ordinance authorizing the construction, ownership, and maintenance of various encroachments into the right-of-way of Market Street, Filbert Street, Eleventh Street, Tenth Street, Ninth Street, and Eighth Street, and authorizing the assignment of certain rights with respect to an overhead pedestrian bridge above Filbert Street west of the house line of Ninth Street to be assigned, by extending the time for compliance with the authorization conditions therein. And Bill Number 170366, entitled an ordinance amending section twenty-one, one oh five of the Philadelphia Code entitled Hero Awards, by increasing the amount that may be awarded to family members of firefighters, police officers, and prosecution detectives killed in the course of performing heroic deeds. And Bill Number 170514, entitled an ordinance authorizing the Procurement Department and the Department of Commerce to enter into a contract for the provision of shuttle bus services at the Philadelphia International Airport, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. These bills have been read on two different days. The question for each bill now is, shall the bill pass finally? Clerks shall call the roll, and upon being called, each council member shall vote aye on each of the bills, nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills for which... indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye, and those bills for which the member is voting nay. Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Dom?
Aye on all bills, except for Bill Number 170565, of which I'm abstaining due to a potential business conflict.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Greenlee?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Gim?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Jones?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman O'Neill?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman O?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Canuna Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown?
Aye.
Councilman Scola?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Taubinberger?
Aye on all bills.
Council President Clark?
Aye on all bills. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative for each of the bills, the bills on the consent agenda are passed. Let the record reflect, the Councilman Dom has abstained on Bill Number 170565. Mr. Decker, please read the title, 170306.
Bill Number 170306, entitled an ordinance to reinstate Bill Number 140439, amending section fourteen, five oh two of the zoning code, entitled CTR Center City Over.
Mr. Decker, please read the title of 170306.
Bill number 170306 entitled an ordinance to reinstate bill number 140439, amending section 14502 of the zoning code entitled CTR Center City Overlay, and section 14602 of the zoning code entitled Juice Tables, and to amend section 14803 Motor Vehicle Parking Standards.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer an amendment to this bill. Amendment has been circulated to members of council, and I move the adoption of the
It's been moved and seconded that the amendment to 1070306 be approved. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill number 170306 has been amended. It will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. I believe we have one more. Mr. Decker, 170474.
An ordinance authorizing 1338 Incorporated to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk café at 1338 through 40 South 10th Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Skula.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer amendment to bill number 170474, has been circulated to all members of council, and we move to move that amendment.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor. Do you amendment? Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill number 170474 has been amended. It will be on our second reading and final passes calendar today. We will now move to our resolutions. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 170599.
A resolution urging the President of the United States to recommit and join with the council of the city of Philadelphia and affirming its commitment to the Paris Climate Agreement.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Morning, afternoon, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 170599 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 170602.
I'd like to be recorded as voting no on that resolution.
Let the record reflect that Councilman O'Neil is a no vote. Thank you, sir. Mr. Decker, 170602.
A resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model cities of urban renewal area identified by house number and street address as 1604 Page Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 170602 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 170603.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties located in the 5th Councilmanic District.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 170603 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 170604.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank these commands titled the certain properties located in the 5th Councilmanic District.
And Chair one more time recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 170604 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 170609.
A resolution authorizing the creation of a special committee on gun violence prevention to address Philadelphia's enduring plague of gun violence by facilitating coordination among stakeholders and formulating a comprehensive gun violence prevention strategy.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 170609 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 170611.
A resolution urging Congress to oppose H.R. 10, the Financial Choice Act of 2010, which would undermine crucial enforcement and compliance actions provided by the Dodd-Frank Wall Street and Consumer Protection Act, deregulate financial institutions and destroy the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau, therefore exposing Americans to potential threats of abuse within the financial system.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And 170611 is adopted. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolution?
Resolution recognizing June 19, 2017, as World Sickle Cell Awareness Day in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring photographer Michael Nichols for his award-winning career and documentation of wildlife conservation, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair one more time recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Emlyn Tunnel for his courageous military service during World War II and his historic achievement as the first African-American inducted into the National Football League Hall of Fame, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez.
And I wanted to be recorded as voting aye on bills and resolutions as I was outside of the chamber.
And amendment, and I think we had two amendments also. Two amendments. You just want to be recorded.
Yes, aye on all board resolutions, bills, and amendments.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The record shall reflect that.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing June 12 through the 19th as 2017 Disharm Hate Week in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Greenlee on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green. Greenlee, I'm sorry. I thought you said Green.
I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the accomplishments and collaborative efforts of Philadelphia's Criminal Justice Partners for successfully reducing the local jail population by almost 20% since July of 2015, with the implementation of programs under the MacArthur Foundation Safety and Justice Challenge, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for paying attention to this issue. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing honoring and commemorating Juneteenth in Philadelphia as the day when slaves were freed in the United States of America more than 150 years ago, and further celebrating National Juneteenth Independence Day, which is also known as Freedom Day on Monday, June 19, 2017, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
And again, thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold hearings regarding the provision of behavioral health services for people of color, and the state of mental health and mental health awareness in the black community, and other communities of color, introduced by Councilman Green.
I'm sorry.
Introduced by Councilman Green.
Now the Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution calling upon the School Reform Commission to reject Resolution IU7, Alternative Special Education Program for Students with Disabilities in grades K through 12, that seeks to establish a new segregated school for certain students with disabilities, and to insist that the school district provide quality, inclusive education to every child, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. As Chair of Council's Committee on Disabilities and Persons with Special Needs, I'm truly honored to be able to participate in the various activities that the city sponsored this week in particular to celebrate Disability Pride Month. From Monday's disability pride flag raising outside of City Hall, to today's acknowledgement of leaders in the disability community, to Saturday's parade and fair, Philadelphia is demonstrating its commitment to support and celebration of our brothers and sisters in the disabled disability community. Yet during the very week where we come together to celebrate our fellow disabled citizens, the School Reform Commission is set to vote on a proposal tonight that will violate the Americans with Disability Act, the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act, by warehousing our students with disabilities in a segregated school. Just a few days ago, the public learned about this proposal. If passed, this proposal will give a $36 million contract to a private company that we know little to nothing about. Further, this contract is set to start on July 1, and can be increased to up to $54 million. The Americans with Disability Act prohibits the segregation of persons with disabilities in state and local programs, services, and activities. Further, the IDEA Act requires that all students with disabilities be educated in the least restrictive environment, which means inclusion education in regular classes alongside children who are not disabled with use of aids and services to the fullest extent possible. To approve this proposal, which is a few days' notice, the SRC will demonstrate a lack of transparency, and this raises numerous questions regarding timing and cost. On the same week that we celebrate Disability Pride, let's not have the cruel irony of discriminating against our city's disabled youth. I urge SRC to reject this proposal, and I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Yes. First, let me say thank you for bringing this to our attention. It doesn't sit well with what we care about over there at the school district. Do you have any additional information about that contract, colleague?
Earlier this week, I think about two days ago, Councilwoman Gim's office circulated a letter from the Education Law Center, as well as from the Philadelphia Coalition of Special Education Advocates. I think many of us have signed on to that letter. They are submitting that letter to the SRC regarding our concern, and also urging SRC not to support this proposal.
And so the best we can hope for is that they would push the pause button and hold that measure.
Correct, because it's due to be voted on tonight, and we just recently just learned about it just a few days ago.
Thank you, colleague. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Yes, thank you very much, Council President. I just also want to acknowledge my colleague Councilman Green for taking on this issue and his leadership, especially in this area. It is a very big concern. The contract that they are looking to approve tonight is for up to $56 million. They hope to open the school in September, and it is our opinion and the opinion of many advocates who've been struggling around special education issues in the school district of Philadelphia that this was far too rushed, and that it is a grave concern that this only came to public light, even though it was clear that this had been in the works for a while, only a few days ago, when it just popped up on the school district's website. So, you know, it is for that reason that we present this resolution before City Council. I do it with, in full support of my council colleague, because I think it's important to send a message that we need to take a little bit more care when we are dealing with vulnerable populations that have historically been underserved within the school district of Philadelphia. There are big issues at stake, but the School Reform Commission should not be making major decisions at this level outside the public eye with almost no notification or opportunity for review. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with all my colleagues and all that they said. This is such an important issue, and one where we have to take even more care of our youngsters, not less. So again, I agree with them, and I say thank you to them, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Did you make a motion already?
Resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. The resolution is approved.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Cheryl Lee on the occasion of her retirement from Laborers Local Number 332, introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution to commemorate and honor the life and legacy of Baltasar Balpingwell, a former political prisoner who braved imprisonment and death threats to challenge authoritarian regimes in the Philippines and around the globe, and became a tireless activist for peace and justice, and a radical voice for a democratic people's movement, introduced by Councilwoman Gim.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you very much, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Streets and Services to hold public hearings examining the implementation of Vision Zero in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Skula on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Skula.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. At this time, Councilman Jones, would you like to speak? Yeah, we're not, we're gonna hold off on that. Thank you. That's funny. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for motion to recess.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand in recess until the completion of the public meeting of the Committee of the Whole, which is scheduled to reconvene at 2:00 PM today.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that council stand in recess until the completion of the public meeting of the Committee of the Whole, which is scheduled to convene at 2:00 today. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries, and council will stand in recess until the completion of the public meeting of the Committee of the Whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the receipt of an additional committee report at the first reading of bills at this time.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the receipt of an additional committee report in the first reading of bills at this time. All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for a report from the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee of the Whole reports at one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, I'm sorry. Yeah, Mr. Decker, will you please read the report? We don't usually do a council session at this time of day, so we're a little off-kilter.
To the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, the Committee of the Whole, which is referred to bill number 170206, entitled an ordinance authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a service agreement between the city of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development relating to the financing of the city of Philadelphia's rebuild program, approving the issuance by the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development of bonds, notes, or other evidences of indebtedness in one or more series to finance or refinance such program, and authorizing and approving the obligation of the city of Philadelphia to pay in full when due the service fee and other amounts payable under the service agreement. Respectfully reports, it is considered and amended the same, and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the first reading of this day, bill number 170206.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bill number 170206. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. I now note that the bill just reported from committee with suspension of the rules has been deemed to have any first reading. This bill will be placed on the second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. We will now move to special business.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of special business at this time.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of special business at this time. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion passes. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for a special order of business.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number 170559 was reported from the Committee of Public Property and Public Works. At this session, the council was deemed to have had a first reading. I now move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit an amendment to be offered to bill number 170559 at this time.
Thank you all. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Clerk will please read the title of bill number 170559.
An ordinance authorizing the commission of public property on behalf An ordinance authorizing the commission of public property on behalf of the city to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development for use by the city of premises located at 400 North Broad Street and 1501 Calle Hill Street, and to exercise an option for the city to purchase the same, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to offer an amendment on your behalf, Bill Number 170559. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Thank you. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill Number 170559 has been amended. Bill Number 170559 has been amended. Will be placed on our final passes calendar at the next session of council. That completes our calendar for today. I don't know if I should ask this. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority? Any speeches on the part of the majority? I don't see any lights on, so we'll move on to...no. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
There must be a malfunction. There's no speech in the majority.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, June 22nd, 2017, at 10:00 AM.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that council stand adjourned until Thursday, June 22nd, 2017, at 10:00 AM. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you all very much.[1769.53]